The regular meeting of the city council is now in session. Would all rise? We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Montgomery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would turn their ringers off, we'll have an invocation by Father Bob.
Gracious and merciful loving God, be with us this evening as our council discusses the needs and the plans for our city. Bless us in such a way that we can find the best decisions for the well-being of all and for the growth of our city, so there are more jobs for people and the economy will turn around. We ask your blessing through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Rule call, please.
Councilman Nettie.
Present.
Councilwoman Durham.
Present.
Councilman Frank.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Okay, everyone is present, so we have a quorum. Okay, you have the minutes of the July 18th, June 11th, and July 12th. Is there any additions or corrections to those that need to be made?
Yes, I was present.
Okay.
I was not listed on the rolls as present.
Sorry.
Making all that up.
You made a real impression.
I don't know what I did.
That was a test, Chad.
Yeah, just see if I read it.
All right, well, we got him now, don't we? Okay, is there any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion.
This one. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll go on down to new business. Robbie?
Evening.
Hey.
We're requesting for an advertisement for additional appropriation on overtime. As you all know, I think you're more aware that July was a pretty hefty month for overtime on the department. Most of that was scheduled. They tried to cover the overtime with some of the detectives went out and worked some of the shifts. We had some part timers that worked some of the shifts and then we were unable to cover them, so we had some scheduled overtime that month.
How much were asking for?
About $30,000.
How far have that taken?
We're currently negative 27, 754, 95.
How much?
That is through the end of July.
27, what? 754, 95?
95.
Thank you. Negative?
Yes. We can increase this at this time? We need to.
Repeat that.
We can increase this amount. We're only covering it by $3,000. It's not going to get us very far until we get a full time.
What's going on in July that there was so much overtime?
Well, we're one man down, okay? So that made a shift short. And what we did was we moved, Officer Perry volunteered and went to third shift to cover some of that. But that also created overtime in some of the other areas because of vacations and things like that that was going on in July. That's usually a heavy month for vacations is July. I know in August coming up, we'll have, I think, three, maybe four days at the most scheduled between all three shifts of overtime.
So you should be considerably?
Way, way down, provided, you know, provided there's no emergencies or nothing like that or something comes up, we should be way down in August.
And how does the remainder of the year usually pan out as far as?
Usually December will be, because you have a lot of guys taking vacation in December with the holidays and stuff like that around. I think sometimes, and this is new to me because I've never handled any of the old Congress even looked at it before, but probably in November towards the end because you'll have a holiday and Thanksgiving and stuff. But most of that, a lot of it's spread out, you know, through the rest of time.
Rosemary, what do you think it would take to get us to the end of the year? So we don't?
I did not break it down by month. To be safe, I would say 50, but I don't know if that would be.
50 additional or 50 total?
50 total right now.
What would that bring the overtime to for the year?
A little over, with that, I'd say around 50, 70 some thousand? Yeah.
We're currently at 27, well, negative 27. We've spent 59 right now. So that would take us to almost 99,000, 100,000.
So we're looking for the year, $100,000 in overtime?
Yes.
I mean, you know, we go ahead and ask for the additional and then Rosemary will have it in your packets on the next time on exactly what we would need, wouldn't you? Be able to figure it out pretty close?
Well, I can't, I don't know their vacation schedule, but he said, you know, August will be good, September and October should be lighter, and then December heavier again when everybody takes their vacation. The only problem, I mean, I see this, you have a lot of officers with a lot of years that haven't received any pay raises and 10 years they've received vacation time instead. So you have additional overtime when you're covering the additional vacation.
Was there a number of officers that bumped up this year to receive an additional week?
Offhand, I can't, couldn't tell you, Gabe. I know that, I believe according to the contract, after you finish your 15th year on, you get your seventh week.
So was there several that bumped up that year?
I think there was a few, but not a lot. I think, you know, the majority of our departments, 16, 17 plus years on is the majority as an older department. And then we have that gap down here at the bottom where we've hired a few guys here and there and stuff. But overall, you know, you've got a lot of guys with seven years, seven weeks because they've got 16, 17, 18, 20 years.
I'd say 75% of the department has over seven weeks, about seven weeks.
Probably. I know I've got 20 years on, it's my seventh week, and then there was a whole group of guys that got hired on after me that are in that group between 15 and 20 years from there.
I was just asking because I was looking at last year's overtime and it wasn't nearly that high. So I didn't know if there was a bunch that shifted up to create that.
Without researching it, I'm not 100% sure. I do know that this, you know, like last month with the manpower shortage and stuff. Also, last year we were working a lot of guys, short shifts. We were working two guys there when they went to the financial emergency. We were working with two guys on third shift and on day shift for several months. And second shift was working with only three guys trying to cover the shifts.
And we're still in the financial emergency? Are we or are we not? It's never, I've never, I have never been told that we're not.
I haven't either.
Well, I do know that the former mayor has, he did give back some of the clothing allowance and some stuff back. I don't know what all he gave back, but he did some.
But he still kept the restraint on.
Yeah, I think he did, he did keep asking to watch the overtime.
We've never been told.
He gave it back at the end of the year, once it was clear that the end of the year was going to be okay. So the financial emergency's still in place?
It's still in place.
Am I correct, John?
Right, it's in place until an executive order.
That's what I thought.
Of the mayor.
Remember I asked you that earlier? You said it was going to carry over because you already discussed it.
It's still on, but I asked him to watch their overtime and all the department heads have watched their overtime. So, like I said, they're just not handing out overtime to be giving it out, so. But I'm not paying people, I don't want to pay anybody not to work either.
But we have more people on a shift now than we had during what you considered the financial emergency?
No, our manpower's less than what we had when we had the financial emergency.
You just run short, basically, what you're saying.
Yeah, we had, we had six guys on third shift that, you know, if there was vacations or whatever, we just worked with two guys that night, whether it be whatever night of the week. That's just how it was scheduled.
Okay, when you said two on the, I thought that's.
No, there were so many guys assigned to a shift and then when they took their days off or their vacations, whatever was on the schedule was scheduled. There were some nights on third shift, you know, a couple times I worked by myself.
And what are we doing now? When vacations?
We're staying at the manpower levels of, according to what the contract says, at three, four, and three.
Can I ask a question as a taxpayer?
Yes, sir. Come to the podium, give your name, please.
I absolutely would. Name's Daryl Morehead, 2601 E.B. Drive. Been in management quite some time. It's been, what I have discovered, cheaper to pay overtime. And I believe if you would ask any of the other major factories in town, Mike, you ought to know.
It is cheap.
You ought to know. I mean, you know, how much does it cost us to bring back the amount of police officers that we need? And I don't know how many that is, same as I don't know how many firemen we need. If I need them, I want them all to come to my house, you know? So, and I appreciate what you're doing, I really do. But please stop and remember, you know, it probably costs 90,000, 99,000 with benefits for a new officer. So if we're just talking some overtime.
You don't pay the friend, they're the friends when you work overtime as you do when you hire.
Yeah. And that's all I have to say about it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have much choice but to do the additional appropriation for what we're, what we're red for. I mean, it's already has been spent, so I guess.
I think that 50 sounds like a good idea because we're going to be there pretty quickly.
But I think we'll need to do that, but I think, I mean, we really don't have a choice when it comes to that, so. Do we need a motion? Is that what we need?
You two are agreeing, it's just she's thinking maybe go ahead and go to the.
I'm thinking maybe go ahead the extra just because it's, we're going to be in the same vote next month.
With the 50, is that what we're talking about?
We are, but.
I mean, does it matter if it sits there till the end of the year?
I don't understand why the 30's already been spent without being appropriated. That's my question.
Why did it get that high before we re-appropriated? Because we've been doing it in $10,000 blocks on increments with everybody else. We've had several of them. And now we have 30,000 here, why is it so? I agree with that.
With the vacations and so forth, I have not been able to sit down with Carol to go through this, to catch it.
If I may, in most cases, overtime always goes up extremely from usually May to what August because of vacations.
It just depends. August, like I said, I think we only have three or four, and we're trying to cover those with part timers and stuff on that. We're actually trying to hire another part timer right now to try to, you know, cover some of that if we can.
And I realize that part of the reason why it's, is because you are short an officer, maybe before you went in, and that's, there's no way you could have prepared for that or whatever. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
So, I'm asking, since you've talked about the 50,000, I'd like to go ahead and ask your permission to advertise for extra 50,000 for the police department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That would bring it up to the, that would bring it up to what, the 97,000?
Yes. To the end of the year, the end of the year.
What if we don't make it till the end of the year, aren't we?
See that?
No, I'm not comfortable with that, not till I look at, I gotta say, I won't sit down and run more numbers because we're, right now I'm thinking in my back of my mind where you're going to get it.
I think we should do the 30,000 and take a bullet because we might have so much sitting there. It's easier to use it when it's sitting there, when you've already got it appropriated. I just think it might be, I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, then we need to go ahead and do 40 to, because the 30 is just now covering us. 25 to spare, 23 to spare, so it needs to be either 35 or 40 to cover us till the next time we can ask.
What fund are you taking that of?
I'm sorry?
What fund you want to be?
It'll be out of general.
What's that going to take the general down to?
I haven't looked at the current.
So, Rosemary, you're saying we've already spent 59,000 and that makes us a negative of 27,000?
You're currently at 49. We've spent, year to date, 49,355.71. That is currently 27,754.95 over what we were budgeted.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that through July 31st?
This is through, end of July.
Okay, so, I'm not at the, I just want to make sure I'm on, we've spent 49,355 and we are, of that 49,355, we're 27,000 short.
Yes, because they were only, they were only budgeted for $10,000 for overtime.
It must have been 20.
No, it was 10. It was, well, and then we added the additional 10, so.
I agree with Chad. I'd like to compare the numbers from last, without disputing your word, Robbie, I have no intention of doing that.
No, that's not what it's about at all.
I'd like to see.
I want to see where we're going to get the money. That's what I want to see.
That's what my point is.
So do we need to go ahead and vote since there's a first and second and allow it to fail and then?
No, I think we just need to go ahead and pass it and she'll bring you, she'll have the numbers for you the next time it came.
Well, we passed 50 and.
No, no, I'm just saying, just pass it that she can add, well, we got, we got to have a figure, don't we?
Well, I want to, I want to say something though. I'm okay with you checking the numbers and everything, but if there's.
Well, I guess we're only.
If they're doing what they're doing, how's it going to change? You know?
Tell them to staff it different?
Going to have to. Well, if we're setting a financial emergency and we operated, how did we operate under the financial emergency last year? How'd you say?
They had us working with two guys on day shift, three guys on second shift, and two guys on third shift. And sometimes we ran one guy on third shift.
So if that was the way we was running the financial emergency and we're still under a financial emergency, then that's what would have to be ran.
We either are or we're not.
Well, right now we're just voting to advertise, correct? So we're not committing to anything with this right now.
But every day, but every day it.
Well, I agree with that, and I know we're going to have to do the 27. But what I'm saying, and it's not going to go through tonight anyway because we're going to have to advertise for it and do it, so the actual vote is going to be at the meeting where we advertise for it. Is that correct? My correct?
But you'll be asking for the 50.
Well, that's right, we'll be asking for the 50.
What I understand from the conversation, they're not going to do that. So do we go ahead and vote, vote it down, go for a new number after that?
Mr. Baker, can we advertise for 50 and the council still cut it if they want to? Even though it was advertised for 50?
Yeah, it can't be more, right?
So you, yeah, you just can't add to it, but you can cut.
We can appropriate those.
So, so we can.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, we have one aye.
They'll be opposed.
Yeah, one aye. Okay.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks. Okay, before you have resolutions, 2016-21, 2016-22, 2016-23, these are all to accept money back. And 21, it's for, see how much is it for? How much is it total?
809, 89.
809, 89.
Dash 22 is $3,168. Dash 23 is $1,594.11.
This money is to be put back.
This money for OPO, that'll go back into the overtime.
That's correct. This was one that was missed earlier this year.
Ms. Merrick's moved to accept resolution 2016-21, 22, and 23?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolutions 2016, 21, 22, and 23. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Okay. This here's a transfer in the clerk treasures office. Rosemary, would you like to speak to that?
It's just additional monies that need to be moved to, for all the classes I need to go to. And there's also some classes that I would like to send the deputies to for additional training as well.
What kind of training?
Like IACT and.
IACT, IACT training.
And Keystone, the software training.
Not you, the deputies?
Both of us.
Okay.
Either or, whatever comes.
Just wondering. Ms. Merrick, I'm going to accept pending ordinance 32, or, I'm sorry, 3260.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass, pass pending ordinance 3260 on first reading. Is there any more discussion? If not, if not, all in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passed on first reading. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go to third and final reading. All in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, need a, need a motion to pass pending ordinance 3260 on third and final.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Okay, Robbie, would you like to explain this? Through the weeks, we've, we've found that, under Marion Newhouse's mayorship, he had a bicycle patrol and we're bringing that back. And we found the bicycles, we've got them equipped, and now we need the officers equipped and this money is to help them buy uniforms. Go ahead, Robbie, go ahead and I'll let you explain it further.
Yeah, we still had all the original bikes that were purchased. We took them up to, I believe it wasikes Bikes up in Richmond.
For me, you got, Robbie, excuse me.
We have four total bikes. Those were all, I forget how old, back in 2002 or sometime, whenever they purchased them around then or whatever, maybe even earlier than that. Took them all up toikes Bikes, got them repaired, fixed, maintenance, everything like that to make sure they were safe to be on the road. After that, we had to look into the lighting systems on them because the lights that we had on them had a battery pack, looked like a water bottle. They don't make it anymore. So there was no way to take that, those lights and flip them over to a different battery. So we had to look into buying new lights, which we ended up buying LED lights to put on them and then ran on two AAA batteries. Should last 120 hours batteries and stuff like that. Also, we had to buy uniforms for the guys because you don't just wear a typical police uniform. You wear a special type of shoes, shorts, helmet, different shirts that you wear, that you wear out there and stuff. And the guys are actually going to start riding this week up at the fair a little bit. They're going to come in on their own time, take time back and ride around at the fair just so they can start being seen and stuff. And then as manpower allows during the time of the summertime, then we'll kind of shift those guys around a little bit because some of them's on different shifts, so we'll be able to maybe work it out where they may be able to be out one night, two nights a week sometimes. We're only going to have two bikes out at a time because we'd never be able to get all four out. Back when we had the manpower, when we were 42-man department, all four of us would be out riding one night on Friday, Saturday nights and stuff like that when the bars were downtown a lot.
Would you mind giving the names of the men that you want to ride?
We have four primary, which is Mark Coons, Dean Roland, Brad Rosser, and Ryan Sherwood. And then Clint Brown's going to be an alternate if somebody can't ride or somebody's on vacation and we need a bike out there.
Robbie, when you do that, does that mean you're going to be pulling a patrolman out of a patrol car?
Only if manpower allows that. We will not run a shift short or pull a guy off, you know, so, so like in August, there's going to be some shifts where maybe five guys are all scheduled and we'll pull one for maybe thirds if they have five guys and one from seconds if they have five guys. So they'll still have four guys working the street and then put them guys riding down on patrol. So they can ride through the alleys and do some downtown areas. And then if we can have them out there when we have events downtown, it'll be very good for them to be out and about when there's things going on in the community downtown.
We won't be generating overtime to do this?
No overtime at all. The guys, the guys that are working the fair this week are doing it for comp time only so they can take a day off later on in the month or the year or whatever.
So you'll basically be taking somebody out of the park that went up?
Yes.
And I think this too helps with public relations too with, you know, the kids are going to see them, they're going to, I know under, under Mayor, under Mayor Newhouse, the kids would ride along with them and so, and so it's, you know.
That's dangerous. It is, kids riding with them.
What shift, or all shifts or?
As far as they'll be working, it'll just depend. You know, we'd like to have them out there when it starts to get dark from 6 to 2:00 in the morning or something like that, especially if it's a Friday, Saturday night, maybe when the bars are, you know, going on. But if it calls for something like maybe Thomas, when Thomas was in town, it'd been nice to have him out there just kind of riding around, talking to the kids, being seen. That way the parents kind of feel a little bit more safe when they're around and stuff when you see that. Back when I rode, we used to ride all, well, we used to have party on the square and different things like that downtown and we tried to ride on much of those events as we could so that way we were around. Because when you have the downtown blocked off, it was easier for a bike to cut across, get to an area quicker than it was for a car and have to drive all the way around and then an officer get out of his car, walk whatever to get into that area.
Is this going to be on a trial basis or are you just going to implement it and go with it?
It's going to be on a trial basis, but like I said, it's not going to incur any overtime. If they have extra guys on the shift, then we'll pull from the shift and put them on there. So it'll be, we'll look at the schedule for August and see if we can assign any days. Captain Bolose is kind of the one taking care of it and everything, assigning the officers and making sure that when he assigns them that there's plenty. So, you know, if it ends up that there's overtime that day or whatever, then he'll just have to get off the bike and he'll have to work a shift.
Now, the comp time is going to be, the time is convenient for not to.
It will cause no overtime or nothing to comp time. They can't use any comp time that causes overtime. It's only when there's enough guys on the shift to work that day, they can take it.
How far of a distance will they cover? I mean, my question, what I'm leading to, if you're going to pull a guy out of a car and put him on a bike, you're going to take away coverage time on a bike, correct?
Well, depending on, they're going to stay in a certain area, so they'll be able to cover, cover that area too if there's things going on there. So if there's, if they're riding in downtown and there's a car that gets a call and they're up on top of 10th Street Hill, they can always come across the radio and say, we're a block away, we'll handle that call.
Well, I think they can kind of cover more ground with a bike than they can, or as much at least in a.
In a shorter area, yeah. But not, you know, you're not going to be able to expect them a third, third street to go all the way up to 30th to take a call, I mean.
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
And they're not going to be able to respond to emergency, but if it's something, you know, small and they need to, or if they're headed up that way and they decide, hey, we'll take it if it's a, you know, just a regular routine call and it's not a time responsive call, then they can take it if they want to. But right now, we're wanting to try to get them to work more events, event type stuff to be seen.
Did we stop, I can't remember, Robbie, did we stop doing it because of manpower or did we, it just wasn't effective or? or did we, it just wasn't effective, or why?
It was very effective, I mean, when...
But why did we stop it?
I don't remember when it actually stopped. Um, when they started reducing the manpower, when we started slowly reducing manpower, they pulled it out to cover the shifts.
Okay.
Um, I don't even recall who the chief was at the time when it, when all that took place. Because it was very, I mean, it was very effective.
And they ride along in traffic, too. Traffic, they ride through, and there's a lot of things, they can, as they ride by, they can look in cars and, so. Okay, any more discussion on this? Any more for Robbie? I'd like to have a motion in second to pass pending ordinance thirty-two sixty-one.
I'm moving to pass pending ordinance thirty-two sixty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Need a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules to go to third and final reading on pending ordinance thirty-two sixty-one. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you, Rob, I appreciate it.
Now, that was a vote to go, go to the third and final, right?
Yeah.
That wasn't the actual.
We need the third and final.
We did the third and final, we didn't do the...
I didn't do that one?
No, we just go to suspension of the rules.
Okay. Now I need a motion to pass it on third and final reading.
Second.
All right, that's what you guys are in training for.
Who's in training?
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Bam.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pass it on third and final reading. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we got it.
You passed it, you passed it.
We got it done.
We passed it.
All right. Okay, going to old business, you have pending ordinance thirty-two fifty-nine that passed on first reading by, what was it, I can't remember, six to one?
Forty.
Forty, yeah, forty-three, with, and we suspended the rules.
No, we did not.
And then the suspension rule failed.
Right.
All right, so we're here for second and final, I mean, second reading on thirty-two fifty-nine. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, before we do this, I've had lots of members of the community ask what was actually in it, so, uh, I would like that one of the members of the negotiating committee kinda go through what the changes are in it.
Okay, we can, we can handle it.
I haven't even read it.
I have, you have a copy?
Yes. I've got that.
Oh, you got that, nevermind.
I, I thought you were the whole contract. I've got the whole contract.
Just the changes on it?
Yeah. You got it?
Yeah. Yeah, I had lots of people ask.
I thought you were talking about the... Okay. I'll just read the highlighted version, so, the whole contract, it's a lot. Um, most of the, I'm just gonna, just start from the top and come down if you have your copy. A lot of it is in the article one.
If you want a new copy, I can look on with him. Excuse me.
All right, changes in dates, um, July first, twenty sixteen, to June thirtieth in twenty twenty, went to March first of twenty twenty. And the interim changes, that party agrees to establish a subcommittee of equal representation, no more than three union appointees and three management appointees appointed by each party they represent to explore and develop the details of a new department, maintenance department. By mutual agreement of the parties, once said agreement has been reached by the parties during the term, this agreement shall be reduced in writing in a memorandum of understanding and signed by the authorized representatives of the common parts of slavery agreement. In short, we're developing a maintenance, uh, department out of that. Uh, if you go to... Page fifteen, Article six. Employees will be allowed to sell up to one week's vacation during the year, provided such notice as self-vacation is provided to management before December thirty-first of the current year. Page seventeen. Uh, utilities will set up a health reimbursement account and deposit nine hundred dollars per insured employee per year, per each year of the agreement, which is what they currently have, and be administered by a third party effective January first, twenty nineteen, and thereafter, the deposit will be nine fifty per employee into the employee's health reimbursement Session, section six point oh nine, page eighteen. The utilities will, will provide to each employee ten dollars a month reimbursement to the employee for usage of the employee's cellphone during utilities business. This reimbursement shall not be taxable.
And Chad, you might explain why that's, that's, why that's that way right now?
Yeah, they use their personal cellphones now, the radios are broke, it's gonna cost a fortune to fix the radios, and it's a lot more cost effective to give them their reimbursement back on their cellphones. Page twenty redefines temporary employees' duties. Uh, they're limited to lawn care, painting, and general cleaning, which is limited to housekeeping, cleaning, and does not affect the maintenance of utilities facilities. Page twenty-two is the same thing as the, uh, temporary employee description on this rule.
Chad, is it on page twenty and, and twenty-two? Aren't those also salary changes?
Yes, sorry, I apologize, they're not highlighted right here, I didn't catch them. Um, the salary rates are increased on, I didn't bring that short list.
Increase fifty cents first year.
Increase fifty cents an hour the first year, first, correct me.
First year, nothing second.
July first, twenty sixteen, was that fifty cents an hour, all classifications, and then July first, twenty eighteen, was that twenty-five cents an hour, all classifications. And the reason we gave that raise was, I saw it was a raise, that's money given by them, money they didn't take on previous contracts. And page twenty-three, there's a date change, June third, twenty twenty, and that's all the changes. That's good, catching up.
Okay, is there any additional discussion on that?
Yeah, as before, as I said before, there are several things in here, um, that I think that really need to be revisited. Um, some of them are language changes, like there's, some of these are very, very simple things, um, like the apprentice, uh, employees, and it talks about the apprentice rate on section four, point zero, point zero one, temporary transfers, uh, some simple things like that, and there are other things in here, uh, as one of the major ones is the wage increase, um, and some other things I think we need to look at, uh, to make sure the city remains solvent. So, and that, we have enough, uh, money in cash reserve, so that if we do have a major break, then we have enough money to pay for those things. So I think we should re-look at this and have both parties come back to the table and revisit some of these things. So that's my opinion on that.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Yes. Um, the co, there's, there seems to be a, um, uh, kinda some confusion on the negotia, on the, on the, on, okay, it was my opinion, it was my, I don't wanna say assumption, but it was my, to my knowledge, the negotiating teams were that. They brought the, they came to a tentative, tentative agreement, or, and brought it back to the council, which we had a meeting, uh, to discuss that, the proposal, and to make changes and suggestions and whatever, and then they take that back and they negotiate again and whatever, however many times was needed. At the last meeting, before the last council meeting, it was a special meeting, and at that time, it was brought to our attention that, that there were people who thought that the negotiating team had the authority to, uh, be the final, be the final say as far as the contract. And this is not just the utilities contract, this is all of them. And my question is, why are we even voting on this if the, if they, and I'm not talking, this is nothing personal, anybody on the negotiating team, this would be any negotiating team. I think you guys have done a good job, and you've spent a heck of a lot of time.
Thank you.
But why are we, why are we voting, even voting, if it's a done deal? When at this meeting, we had some suggestions, and I have a feeling that the other side thought that the negotiating, negotiations weren't complete at that time, that they didn't have complete authority, because we received a letter stating we had, we had put forth a proposal, a change to this contract, and without going into what it was, we, we got a letter that if that was put in, a larger raise was gonna be, uh, insisted on by the other side, and if not, it was gonna go to arbitration, which I kinda feel like is somewhat of a threat, and I don't really, I don't really deal with that. And I just think, I think it needs to, it needs to be clear as to what the, um, what authority they have, for their sake and for ours. I mean, I, why do we even, why are we even taking a vote if it's, if it's a done deal? I, I don't, I don't understand that, and I want that to be clarified before I vote on this or any other contract, especially any other contract.
Well, the reason you're voting on it is because you're in control of the money.
Well, I agree with that, but I...
And that's why you're involved in it.
Well, but we, evidently, we didn't need to be involved in it, because it was a done deal by the time, we spent, what, three and a half hours on a Saturday discussing this, and if it was already discussed and it was already, I mean, and we were told that it was brought back to us, this is what it's gonna be, and we, they were just, and we were being informed, and we were to vote on it, so if we voted down, then, you know...
Chad, would you like to explain that? You, you led the committee?
I don't agree with, I don't agree with the three-person negotiating team having the full authority, especially as many contracts as they are negotiating, which I think is overload on these three people, because they've had countless meetings and whatever, and there are seven of us, and I don't think it's fair to you guys to be negotiating all contracts.
We knew that when we accepted it.
I realize that, but I just think it's, I...
Well, one of, one of the reasons is, is because you can be led all of the, they negotiate all on the contract, all in the same direction, whereas if you got multiple negotiating committees, neither committee would know what the other committee's doing. One might get an exorbitant raise, and they might say, "We don't have a raise," they go, "Well, they give a raise and you didn't," so...
Well, by the same token, you don't have the deal where they got one, so we want one, and they got this, so we want this. I mean, I just don't, the, my, my main thing, the main thing is, that's, that's an argument for another, a discussion for another time.
That's right.
That's a discussion for another time.
The way to take this is, we, we went in and negotiated, we come with our, with our best terms, that we felt comfortable between the three of us. We bring it to the council, the council must approve it, and you still have an opinion on it one way or the other. If you don't like it and you want something different, then you have to vote it down and go back. At this time, this is what we're bringing, saying this is where we are at, this is what we think is a good contract. If council rejects it, we do have to, we have to go back.
Then you go back to the negotiating team. Okay, so in other, in other words, it's not cut and dry that you guys have, or any other negotiating team has the, the final say, and it's just a, it's just a token vote.
That's correct, 'cause the same, it could have been, it could be on the reverse statement, but their, their membership has to come back and vote it as well.
And that's what I thought, but that's not what I was, that's not the impression I got at this special meeting.
Well, then let me ask a question, what is the recommendation of the negotiating committee?
We brought it to you. It's what you asked us to do. The ordinance. May I make a comment? Diane, I, I feel bad that you feel threatened, because it's the union's right legally, that if they disagree with us, they have every right in the world to take it to arbitration, and that's not a threat. That's what they're, they have that privilege.
Well, and I, I have a problem with it being presented to us so close to the last meeting, and we had, we had a meeting an hour before the last council meeting.
It was the same contract as we brought you before.
That's right.
It was the same one without, without the changes, any of the changes.
We gave you the highlighted version of the contracts. I hope nothing's changed. The highlighted version was the same.
I think, though, that we thought, that, we thought it was an idea tossing out meeting and thought that there would be another meeting.
We thought there would be another meeting or whatever, that, so, in other words...
There's a misunderstanding on what the meeting was, was giving you information of where we were at, what we, we negotiated, what we're trying to come to.
And why did we just, why did we discuss, why did we discuss the things that we, and this, why did we discuss this provision if it was, if it wasn't, wasn't gonna be considered? I mean, that should have been, it should have been said, that kind of, you know, we can't, we're not gonna put this in there. I, it's my thing is, okay, we'll take it to them, and evidently, it was taken to them, because...
What do you want us to do?
Well, I'll tell you why, I think what we ought to do is, we ought to vote on this. We can discuss this and discuss this.
And that's true, that's true.
So I'm just gonna ask, I need a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance thirty-two fifty-nine. And so I want a roll call vote, please. Or is there a motion in a second first? Very good, very good rules first. Need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, to pass pending ordinance thirty-two fifty-nine on second reading.
Councilwoman Durham.
No.
Councilman Frank.
Yes.
Councilman Bishop.
May I speak for five minutes?
You got two.
Okay, two, I'll make it short. I voted no the first time, because I didn't feel comfortable with what these gentlemen were asking for, and I went back and done my homework. I've talked to at least six different people, and the fact is, these guys had the fifty cent raise back eight years ago, and they gave it up, because they knew what kind of financial status the city was in. I've seen these guys work when it's fourteen below zero, and I've seen them work when it's a hundred and ten in the shade, and I'll give you an example, they just spent thirty-four hours this last weekend on the Eighth Street Hill leak, which has been leaking since I was a little boy, because it just keeps going and going, but they didn't give up on it. So therefore, after doing the homework, I feel in my conscience and in my heart that the right thing to do is to give them what they gave up, so I vote yes.
Councilman Nobby.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, if the contract they gave up was fifty cents, then we're adding seventy-five, it's more than what they gave up, so it is a raise in essence. Uh, I do appreciate the work they do. I've seen them out there many times, especially last winter, when it was really, really cold outside, and they got sprayed, covered with ice, and I appreciate the work they do, I appreciate what you guys do, I really truly do. Um, but I also think that the most important thing for all of us is that we remain solvent, because if the city doesn't remain solvent, if the utilities doesn't remain solvent, then basically what any contract that is written will be taken to a judge, and the judge will decide what to do with that contract. If we have a major break, and no one can predict a major break, we need to have some cash reserves. We have a, a very old infrastructure, so we need to have that, that money available. So for that reason, I vote no.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips.
For the same, for the reasons that I, um, stated before, and I just, right now, we're negotiating, oh, not negotiating, but we're having, we have an issue of a new tax coming up, a new, uh, for the city, that the county needs. We're probably gonna be on the heels of that, we're in a financial emergency, and I just are, I'm gonna vote no.
Councilman Nettie.
Make a comment first, before I vote, and, and that is, uh, prior to all the negotiations, before we met with any union, the mayor arranged for the, the negotiating team to meet with every department head, and, um, their task was to bring to us languages that makes the contract management friendly, and, uh, financial information out of their department, what would be supportive. Some can afford raises, some can't, so we talked with each department, and knowing what the department heads from utilities told us, I vote yes.
Okay.
Supporting.
Four-three, okay, passed on second reading. Okay, I'd like to bring up, uh, pending ordinance thirty-two fifty-nine on third reading, and is there any more discussion? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote. Need a motion in a second, thank you. Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance thirty-two fifty-nine on third and final reading. Need a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Bishop.
Yes.
Councilman Nobby.
No.
Continue.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips.
No.
Councilman Nettie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Durham.
I wanna say something, since I didn't say anything the first time. Um, well, you know, we've just had, um, an instance where we, you know, debated about how much to appropriate to pay a negative figure of overtime, um, and we therefore had a discussion about staffing and whether or not we're in a financial emergency, and whether I, I, the term, whether or not a department, and I do consider them a department, can afford a raise, I just, I think that is sort of contradictory with the fact that we're in a, a financial emergency. We either are or we aren't, and, I mean, I think we've highlighted a few things here that we need to work on, and we haven't worked on anything since last meeting, so none of our, none of our questions got answered, so therefore, I will be voting no.
Councilman Frank. Councilman Frank?
Different fund, different gun string, yes.
4-3.
Okay, pending ordinance 3259 has now become ordinance number 6319. It has passed. So there is a contract between the Connersville Utilities and the City of Connersville. Okay. Okay, miscellaneous business, mayor's update. I hope everybody goes to the fair, that's one thing, it's, it's great up there. They're busy already, and we're looking, and we're looking to pave Industrial Avenue North, so that's in the works right now, and, so that's, that's a couple of good things from the city, and Rosemary, do you have anything?
I guess my two cents is, a raise is cheaper than overtime, and as Chad said, they're different funds. One is self-funded, the other one's from property taxes, and then I will continue to look into the matter of the additional overtime for the place.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
I'd like to say something, Mayor. This weekend is the Grand Prix, Connersville J.C.'s Grand Prix downtown, Connersville. Some watch between Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Grand Avenue, and, and Central, and I know there's some past J.C.s in here that worked on it years ago. The Grand Prix this weekend, it's free admission, so bring kids, bring family, come down, watch a really good go-kart race on the streets of Connersville. And what's good about this is, the more people who come and enjoy this, the more carters you will have every year, and the more carters, that's, the entry fee is where they make the money. They don't make it on us, we come, see it free, but it's the entry fee from the carters, and that pays for your Independence Day fireworks. So just by attending something free, you actually help fund the fireworks for next year, so please go, it's a great time.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, any other council person got anything they want to say? If not, we'll open it up to the public. Is anybody out there like to come up and say anything? Pat, come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Charles P. Allen, I go by Pat. I'm a former employee of the Connersville Utilities, I retired August 29th, 2014, 36 years of service. I remember when the former mayor came down to the Suri Streeting Plant with all utility employees present, and assured us that if we did not give up the 50-cent raise, there was going to be layoffs. So we gave up the 50-cent raise, and guess what? They turned around, laid off people anyway. So, that being said, that's what I had to say about the utilities, and nothing against the police department, I respect Robbie, I've known Robbie forever, but these guys are going to give up, are going to do us some comp time, this bicycle thing. When I give you comp time, and you utilize that comp time, what's going to happen? You're going to pay overtime for somebody to take care of that comp time. That being said, comp time is not just comp time, it becomes overtime for someone. And that's just, that's just-
This body is not the HR department, that's, that's where we-
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just stating that, I just want you all to know that, if you don't-
If it's managed, it's, it's correct, if it's managed properly, it will not.
That's right, if it's managed properly, it will not create overtime.
It doesn't always have to create overtime. If you fill the spot, it does, if you don't fill the spot, then it does not create overtime.
That was, that was the question, that was the question I asked, is it would the comp-
Take comp time if it creates a manpower shortage for our comp time?
Right, the comp time would be denied unless it, if it did, yes.
If someone puts in for comp time, and an officer calls it sick, or something else, that officer has to respond, he cannot take his comp time on that day.
Yeah, that was my question.
It's only if manpower allows it. So you cannot run a shift short if you want to take comp time.
You say, you, you have to have staffing-
Yes.
In order to take it, that's in our contract, it states in there that no comp time can be used if it incur overtime.
Okay. Do you understand what my question or my point was?
Yes.
In my eyes, that's how I saw it.
That's a valid, that's a valid question.
That's why I asked that question.
Very valid.
Okay, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, and thanks for the, good to you. Though even though it doesn't affect me longer, as far as raises, it does not affect me, but I was there when that was said, and I, and I, for eight, 10, 12 years, however long it was, I did without that raise, and that's 50 cents a year, you know? So that was always a thousand dollars a year, I was losing, at minimum, and that was regardless of overtime. So, again, that being said, I just wanted to make that point, and I appreciate your time.
In answer to what you're saying, my vote was not strictly for that. And nothing personal with, I, I appreciate the utilities, I know they work hard, and whatever, but it was not solely because of the 50 cent raise.
There are other issues.
Absolutely not, there were other-
Well, I understand that, you know, don't get me wrong, I just, again, I just wanted to make that point, that at that time, we were told-
Right, I understand.
That we're beating the layoffs, and they turn around, laid us off, laid, not me off, but other people off.
And maybe there was a promise they shouldn't make.
Yes.
Well, to clarify that, that's when they brought in the, I can't never think of that, who was that outside?
We're not going to say.
Yeah, McKee, was that it? Something like that?
In my opinion, that could have been handled a lot differently.
Yes, his recommendations was all about him getting his foot in the door, so he could manage it, and that was my opinion. You're welcome.
One question I got before, I asked for adjournment, well, is anybody else in the public want to say anything? Okay, one of the things I'd like to ask the council, since we're all here right now, I would like for the council, the ones that's doing the negotiation, because they're getting ready to bring some contracts up, do they have the right to negotiate, or do they not have the right?
They always have the right to negotiate. They've always had the right to negotiate, but the final say does not lie with them.
That's right.
It's their representative, and they have to take it back to the group as a whole, and the group as a whole has to do it. In the same way with each union, the union will have representatives, they take it back to the union, and they vote upon that. And if the membership on either side disagrees with it, then it goes back to the table.
So is your membership already voted on this? Okay, so it was taken to you first, right, and that's why I'm just saying that for the, for the viewing audience and whatever, and it was brought to us, and if we voted it, now it's a done deal, which, and if it was not, then it would have gone back to you guys, or would have gone back to the negotiating table, they would have voted again, whatever. I understand it now, and that's, that's satisfactory.
But as I mentioned earlier, you go in the negotiations with an understanding. They know, the union knows what their membership's looking for, the council representatives understand what's being looked for there. Again, we met with department heads to find that out, and at one meeting, I had, made say something to Chad and I, and after last meeting, talked with Connie a little bit. Other than that, I've not had anyone ask me any questions. So the information I used was the information I got from management from each department.
That's what we wasted. And like another thing too, you know, while they were negotiating, the, the rest of the council knew who the negotiators were, and failed to contact any of them about what they was asking them, what they were doing.
That's wrong, that's wrong. It's inaccurate.
That's what those meetings are for.
I know, I know they didn't get a lot of input, put it that way, so.
Well, I, I, can I say something real quick? I think that you're right, I mean, about a meeting, I, because I, you have this telephone call, and that's what you said, and that's what you said, well, you like to have all your time at the same time.
I felt like, I felt, just the opposite, I felt like we weren't informed. All these meetings were going on, and, and, and whatever, we finally did have the one meeting, and I'm, you know, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to, you know, create a problem, but this is how I felt, that we had this meeting, finally, after, and I know it takes a long time, but we were not informed, so it's, it's kind of a two-way street. It's kind of like, you call me, no, you call me, no, you call me. I, I think we, we need, if nothing else, you know, just a synopsis.
And I feel about saying that, because I know how many meetings they've already had.
Exactly.
That's what we gave you, was a synopsis. We can't give you a synopsis until we come to some sort of agreement. We might be at a negotiating point that will be inaccurate in two days. So that's what that was, was here's a synopsis when we're negotiating, and that's-
Okay, okay, then, well, I guess, you know, if we don't know what's in negotiating, how can we ask a question?
Because negotiating is that, what we have agreed at this meeting may not be the exact same things we agreed to the next meeting, just because both sides are, are just still discussing. And I believe that the union negotiators don't go back to their members either throughout the thing, until they have something more solid to bring to their members.
Yeah, and that's why I'm-
And that they vote.
Yeah, and that's why I kind of take offense to, to, to the comment that we didn't ask any questions. I mean, I don't think they're, they don't either, they, their, their group waits until they're informed, too.
Before we, before we bring these next three contracts to us, to you folks, do you want to have a separate meeting to go over them?
Well, we had a meeting prior, and we, we, we made our, our feelings known at that meeting, and then we received the same contract, or the same synopsis of what we talked about. So evidently, what we talked about that meeting did not sink in, or was not heard. So another meeting with the end result being the same is kind of a waste of time. If we're going to have it, so that the negotiations can proceed, I think it's a good idea.
May I address the council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My, my name is Bob Fox, I am the business manager for IBW Local 1393, we're out in Indianapolis. I've been doing this job for 20 years, and I've negotiated hundreds of contracts, municipals, RMCs, utilities, pretty much name it, I've done it. And the way that process works is very, very simple. We go to our membership, we say, "We've got contract negotiations coming up, we'd like to get some input, what are you guys looking for?" They look at their contract, they talk, they talk among themselves, they meet with us, we develop what's called proposals. It's no big surprise at this city council when our contract expires, no big surprise whatsoever. Take the initiative, look at the contract, look at the things that you want to have changed, and don't wait until the last minute, and then when it comes to you, for you to decide if you're going to approve the contract, to say, "Oh, wait a minute, there's other things we want to change." Are you serious? That's how negotiations work. Negotiations work is give and take during the entire process. When we sit down at the table, and we negotiate, we are negotiating in good faith. You come in with your proposals, we came in with ours, we haggled through them, we talked about them, we talked about the pitfalls of this or that, we talked about our history. My members have not had a raise for over eight years, they gave back 50 cents, based upon a promise, never came, but that spilled milk, that's water under the bridge, but that's money they've lost for all these years. This utility has received numerous awards in the, in the state of Indiana, and in the running across the nation, for the best water around. And for them, had to sit through and hear about all this stuff, because you guys, you know, you weren't in the loop. I can't speak for if you were in the loop or not, but let's not disrespect one another, let's not talk about spilled milk now. This was the contract, and yes, I sent the letter, and no, it was not a threat. All I was stating was the obvious fact, we have no other choice, we cannot go and strike. We would if we could, absolutely. We have given, given, and given, it was time for us to be treated what we felt was fair. If there's little bitty things in that contract, Mr. Nobby, you want changed, you got now four years, start writing them down, be prepared, come to the table, I welcome the opportunity to sit across the table from you-
I do.
And have the opportunity to talk about your concerns. I would welcome it, because that way, we fully understand one another. There is absolutely no reason why we should be haggling over this thing after the fact. Yes, my membership did pass it, they passed it 11 to 3. My understanding when it comes to council, and the attorney will probably correct me on this if I'm wrong, but it's a salary ordinance. You're approving the money, but we're going to sit there, and we're going to be outhouse lawyers, is what it's going to be. "Oh, we need to change the word 'the' over here." It's a salary ordinance. You want to change it, come to the bargaining table, let's belly up and let's talk. That's what I ask.
Okay, in response to that, that opportunity was not presented to us. The only problem that I had with the letter, if the letter had said, "We need this for this, let's go, you know, negotiate that, that, the arbitration," it's like, it's either this or this, if it's this, it's this, it's no, let's meet halfway, because, and we were not, we were not, I'm not, we were not, it's a new administration, I understand that, but we were not afforded a meeting prior to.
Okay. Well, we had already reached the point of no return at that point, I'm sorry, because we, we had spent days-
We were not aware, we were not aware of that.
Understand.
Mr. Fox, I disagree with you, too, that it's a salary ordinance. We both know that if there was a grievance reached in here, or something like that, and it had to go to arbitration, that would have to go to the city council. So it needs to be, every word needs to be looked at, everything needs to be checked out, because we both know, if there's something that, that grievance is filed by one party, that it's going to come to the city council to determine whether or not they proceed with arbitration. We know that's to be true.
Well, you're allocating the money to pay for the arbitration.
Exactly.
And I do the same thing, I go to my executive board, and I say, "Hey, I've got a, an arbitration, and I need, I need additional funds to do that." But if you recall, Mr. Nobby, last contract before this one, you did the exact same thing this time as you did last time. We were all done, and you brought up the issue about the right to work for less.
I think, I think you're incorrect, sir. I talked to them early on, before we had any meetings whatsoever, and told them what I thought about the contracts.
And it was never brought up to us-
Not this one.
The one before, the one before I talked about. But it was never brought up to us as an issue. So it was kind of like it was deja vu for us, our perception, all over again. And it's my understanding, there were, people were asked if they want to participate in negotiations on the council, and these are the only people that had time?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
There are a couple conflicts I have with other unions, with having relatives in those, which I believe those are conflicts of interest.
Sure.
And I think that you shouldn't be a part of negotiations if you have conflict interests such as that.
And I agree.
So for that instance, I said I couldn't be a part of those negotiations. Now, did that disqualify me from other, other negotiations? I don't believe so, but I was not asked to be on the part of that because of those disqualifications.
I was not asked.
None of the women were approached.
None of us were approached.
Well, use this as an opportunity for future negotiations, I welcome the opportunity to sit down the entire council, you know, if they so choose. We, we, our goal is to get an agreement, our goal is to try to address your concerns, and ours is also to get paid a fair wage and benefits and working conditions for the services they provide, which is a top-notch right now. One thing that Connersville can be the proudest is these men and women that work at utilities, the fine work they put out, they just work 36 hours, non-stop, for this town.
No one disagrees with that.
Nobody disagrees.
36 hours.
No one disagrees with that.
Nobody disagrees with that.
Okay, well-
Actions speak louder than words. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.